Need to be delayed due to the down economy or altered, including the master planning project that we've talked at length about with the bus garage. So with that, I'm going to turn the meeting over to Chris Wifter and I think you're going to start, Chris, with current projects for the summer. Is that correct?
Yes, I am. Yes, thank you very much, Catherine.
Thank you.
For those of you who are in the agenda, you can click on the link and have access to the notes that I'm speaking from. I'm going to move through these projects rather quickly with the idea that if you have questions, either please stop me or you can wait till I get 10 to the end and we kind of go back individually if you'd like to. We have them listed here, kind of in order of magnitude really, for the most part, as far as the size of the projects. These are in fiscal year 2020. They're projects that we currently are active in right now. And I can, I'll describe a little bit of the process as we go through. So first of all, if you have not been up to the seven 12 campus recently, then you probably haven't seen the tennis courts being constructed. They're currently being constructed. And those are under contract and with Snavely Excavation doing a fantastic job. And we're getting pictures from those every couple of days sent to us. We're using PlanGrid. We've got some design costs in there for TDA and some materials testing. And we haven't run into any big challenges at this point yet. We did hit a connection pipe that needed some repair recently. And that was in, within our contract to be able to get that done. So there was about $5,000 worth of additional work that wasn't expected, but that's inside of our construction contingency. But otherwise, moving along very well. And we're really pleased with, with the work. And we're doing weekly construction meetings with the architect, the civil engineer and the construction team. So I've been happy, happy and pleased with the work so far and they have a very organized construction site. I'll stop there just because that's a real large one and it's, it's a biggest first or magnitude. Any questions on that one?
Assuming it came in on budget?
Yeah, it was the lowest qualified bid. Our total construction budget for that project was 500,000. And so, you know, it's below budget. And I would say right now, at least on time, if not, it's not, if not ahead of time. So that's good so far. You know, we're tracking well.
Awesome.
Chris, are you projecting an earlier finish date that you're willing to share with community members who ask at this juncture?
I think I've had a couple.
Where had a schedule?
Yeah, I think I, I think I've had a couple of conversations with that and a lot of that is dependent on weather at this point. The contractor is very motivated to get out of there as soon as they can. They don't, you know, they, they increase cost the longer they're mobilized on the site. And so, you know, our construction end date was, was in August. I anticipate that it will be before then, but I certainly don't feel like we would, we can commit to that until, you know, we're probably three or four weeks down the road and kind of know where, where we sit. But I, everything is looking very, very good for on time or ahead of schedule, if that's appropriate to say. Okay, I'll move on and if there's any questions, we can come back to that one, to roofing project. You know, we've been doing roofing assessments every two years, some pretty detailed roof scans. I feel like we're farther ahead on our roofing replacement plan than, than we were three or four years ago. We have under contract 277,000 for three roofing sections to be done here at the seven 12 campus. And so there's a link to the project summary for those of you who want to dig into that. And we're using a Duralast roof, which is basically the same type of roof design that we've been using for the last three or four years. And 20-year warranty on that as well. We'll drop down to budget purchase on the school bus. We had an interesting opportunity here where we got some matching funds for the, through the EPA grant. And so we have $60,000 here coming into the district that we wouldn't normally get. We're advancing one purchase that was going to happen in fiscal year 2021 into this fiscal year in order to capture that grant and take those buses off the road. Once we utilize the grant, the buses we get rid of will have to be taken off the road. So we're doing that. I have a project that's up for purchase and agreement at the board meeting on Wednesday night for our continued exterior door access and control system. This is consistent with the entrances at Gurnee and at the seven 12 campus at the high school. Those new secure entrances, those door systems are using the card system and the access control system that is being used at the intermediate school was designed at the intermediate school. Our goal is to get all on one complete access control system. Same hardware, same technology, same software. Mr. Doherty's been very helpful in vetting this project and it's going on for, on, on the board meeting on Wednesday night. Large HVAC project. This is phase one of five phases. And so this phase one, we have budgeted $405,000 for. We have an engineer that's working on this. You can see a draft of the assessment there. There's a mechanicals piece and a controls piece. The controls piece is tied into automated logic. It's back net compliant. And we are using that BAS system right now. We've been using it since the intermediate schools come online. And in that BAS system, we also have the gurney boiler, the high school boiler and the, the pack as well too. So those systems are all going to be all kind of rolled into one. The scope of that project is loosely defined now and will be more defined as this report gets drafted and assessed. We spent about two hours this morning online with a meeting with the engineer who's designing that project. Very complicated project, but we're going to get a lot of functionality for our money on that. Gurney modular repair. As you know, the committee here looked at removing or replacing that and saying, do we still need to keep the modular unit? We do. We did a pretty extensive program review with the principal this spring. And the, the, the idea is yes, we do need to keep that, especially with increasing enrollment size considering, considering kindergarten. We put in the budget $20,000 to either remove that unit or get about three to four more years of life on there. We have a scope here that allows us to get three to five more years of life for 21,000, which is close to that $20,000 budget. We have a smaller window replacement project here at the high school, 21 windows that also includes abatement. That's under contract with capital. We've saved a little bit of money by getting some donated glass with that project. So the board will see a donation request as well too with a thank you note to Integral. They've been a nice partner in this. They also donated the insulated glass units in the fitness center and this has performed really well. So we're excited about that project. This is really basically a project to be able to determine. And these are single pane windows we're replacing. Single pane windows. That's right. And so, you know, you see that many of these windows were original to the, you know, 1950s and 60s construction in this building. We're excited to be able to get those replaced, but we see down the line a larger project. And so this will give us an opportunity to see, you know, how that goes. So flooring projects across the district, we'll do those in-house. We've already ordered the materials. Another grant being given us opportunity is this digital radio network. It's for safety and security for many of our, you know, key people across the district, administrators and key office staff and then some other key staff across the district. Our SRO, all being linked into the same digital network with new radios. Our radios are very out of date and our network's out of date. So we're looking forward to this. Also has access to bridge into our PA system in buildings and to bridge in directly to Sugar Valley Dispatch. We've been grateful to work with Sugar Valley Dispatch on this project. And their technology folks down there have been really helpful in helping design this project. And we're grateful for the, the grant savings there as you can see from the numbers. Middle school parking lot. We're, we're looking at doing some patching and some striping and adding a crosswalk. That work is being bid out in the next couple of weeks. And we're looking to hopefully get some savings with some of the quotations that we'll get in as a result of the economy being in a, in a challenging state. I know paving contractors right now are really looking for work with some of the slowdown that's going on at the state level. And then the other thing that we've backlogged in, that's in this fiscal year budget is the design work for the transportation facility. We've had a lot of discussion about this, this past year with this committee. And we're putting this kind of in backlog right now, you know, and asking for some input here. I know the board's considering this as an option. Number one, it's, it's a good deal of money. But, you know, it, it's something that we feel like right now, we want to just kind of pause with that. So I'll pause and just kind of wait and see if there are some questions and some additional feedback I can help with.
Pretty good review in my opinion.
Yeah, I like it. I mean, I, I, I only, I know you guys are dealing with what you're dealing with, so I totally respect that. Seems like that transportation facility is still continuing to like fall apart. And if, I mean, unless there's a way to get around designing something custom for it, which I doubt, you know, it'd be great to get the design done so that when you could see your way through to building it, you'd be ready to. But I, that is a lot of money. It's 170K, right? So it's one of your bigger chunks there.
Add on to that, George, so the, the bus garage project in its entirety is going to be looked at pretty closely by the board. So this is a proposal that we would hold off on doing the design. And so we really need to talk and think through what it means to delay that project. Whether or not we want to go ahead and, and have the design done and then look at the building of it later. So your input here is really valued. Because no decision has really been made yet about, about what we're going to do if we have to, you know, slow down the project.
I'm, I'm, I'm not looking at the documents that you set out. So the, the design proposal you're talking about is for the garage?
Correct. Transportation garage, 170,000 to design it. And it's a 2 million-ish build, right?
Correct.
So the only, the only way to really save, I mean, it seems like unless you know you can actually go a different direction or the parameters of the design would change. Be great to like get the design done now that we haven't wasted the year. And then you could hit the ground running. When it be, because it, not that I love the transportation building, it just seemed like every time we go through this, it's number one. Why? Because it's a, it's, it's a piece of junk right now. People are split up where they shouldn't be split up. There's like 10 things wrong with how it's happening right now. So it seems like it's, it's quite high priority.
To doing what George is suggesting is in the event that something fails and we're in six months and we're faced with this decision of we have to put some substantial amount of money into it. The way we were planning on having this costed out was going to be, here's the bare minimum of design to get what we need and then add-ons and how much do they cost? And I think it would enable, if we have that design work done, I think it would enable the board to make more informed decision about how to proceed in the event of some sort of emergency.
Question on the, on the $170,000 cost. This is $2 million of construction, is that right? Eight and a half percent. Does that sound luxurious to you?
I think, so I do believe, and I have to look at the report, I believe there's construction, construction testing as an allotment in there, which would, I don't know that that would make up, you know, $30,000. It might. But I believe there's soil borings and I have to look at the report, but I think that is included in there as an allotment.
Wasn't there survey work in there as well, Chris?
Yeah, there is as well too. I think that's about $20,000. I, I, is an allotment. I think we, I think we had a 7% number, but I would, I don't have it in front of me. I'd have to check the contract. You know, that is a good point in that, you know, that the construction assessment would be the first thing that would have to happen if we went ahead with that, which I think most, most of you do know that.
And for, for me, just to give some context, this came up as we, I mean, I don't know if you've read in the papers or not. We were anticipating beyond, being on the ballot for 7.90 in November. We've made the decision that, that, that is not the right thing to do. So this was part of a cost reduction strategy with a larger scope. Now, if the board decides, and you know, to get through a levy cycle, what that is, there's multiple options out there. But if, if the decision is made that the bus garage needs to be within that levy cycle, whether that be three years or four years, two years. I think obviously the design now needs to get done. And then we need to just go back and say, okay, where are we going to find those savings somewhere else? So I just, just to provide kind of a larger context for everybody.
You know, the other thing that I had thought about while we were talking as well, if we wanted to do, you know, an, an independent kind of facilities assessment of that area, just more, you know, what, what could go wrong in the next couple of years? You know, we could have, you know, that, take a look at it and we wouldn't, you know, obviously the designer who's looking at that, we would have someone else look at it. You know, just a, a real quick thumbnail. I, I don't, there's some, that, that is such a rudimentary facility. I don't think that there's a lot that could go wrong with it besides the roof. You know, that, that really is going to be a, a big risk to us that we can't mitigate somehow. But, you know, the functionality and the purpose of it right now is just, is really challenging, I think, as you, as we, as we mentioned.
So the, the, you've got a, a facility that's, that's not likely to fail in any kind of catastrophic way. What we're really talking about is long-term, we would, we really think that in order for our bus facilities to operate properly, they need to be in a new structure. We need to take the old one down, build a new one. It's in the same spot, right? So the evaluations that we're talking about on the design end going forward, are they projecting doing soil testing because the facility is going to be planned on, it's anticipated that it'll be bigger and that we could actually do some of this upfront testing, leaving the building in place as in sort of incremental steps towards the design? Or is it, would it be, is it more, is the design the $170,000 or whatever? That's, that's the total all-in package and now you've got a package, you said, got a set of drawings here, sitting there waiting for somebody, you know, waiting for them to pull the trigger to actually get it started. How far along have they talked about in that $170,000 process?
I think, correct me if I'm wrong, Chris, part of this was we were, we were trying to get ahead of design. And whatever preliminary testing needed to be done, so we could move right into kind of breaking ground and doing this project. That's a good point, Phil. If it's a, listen, we believe this is going to move forward at some point. You could back out the soil testing, you could back out the surveying, maybe, I don't know. Back out whatever you can and at least save some if we're going to go forward with it.
I'm not sure you need to go through construction documents either at this point. If you went through a design development, just got a head check on, you know, your budgetary stuff. I wouldn't think that, that soil borings are going to dramatically influence cost. I mean, so I think you could pare back the scope and, and get a level of comfort and directional knowledge that would be helpful.
Chris, can we get more specific information on the potential, on what the potential risk is? Because what, what you just said about the limited concern about a major failure is, that's not the impression I was working under. So that changes my view on all this. I thought we were within a time window where repairs were such that it could be, they could be substantial at, in cost and we wouldn't want to be putting that money into the building.
Let me just say it this way, our facility isn't extremely complex. And so if something goes bad on it, we are going to have to replace it. But it is very, it is a very rudimentary building, rudimentary building system. So there would be a lot of, there would be opportunity for us to repair or replace things. You know, where if you had, you know, a complex boiler system at a school or something that was more, you know, or even like, you know, you know, just more complicated systems, it would be, it would, it would drive up the complexity and the cost. I think it's, I don't, I don't, you know, I know that just from looking at it, but yet our FCI is pretty high. I'm happy to have, you know, say Glenn Ramage, take a look at it. He's very familiar with the facility and just say, you know, just do a thumbnail, quick report. He's been through it a number of times, you know, and, and give us some feedback. I mean, there's some things like the bus, bus block heaters that are always, you know, require some maintenance. There's the, you know, the fencing's in pretty bad shape. You know, a decent amount of that kind of stuff. But we do have a little bit in the budget. I don't have it in front of me, but I think we have about $15,000 this year in this fiscal year budget to hit any repairs that have happened. We just wanted to have that for to kind of cover risk, but I think that's, that's a, an option. I did, I did pull up the, by the way, the cost on the proposal for the design. For the, there's a 7% basic service on $2 million. That's $140,000 for the design cost. For the design fee. And then there's some additional allowances in there for a site survey, a geotechnical, environmental site assessment, some, you know, a traffic study if one happens to need to be done. You know, and this is done, actually, it's kind of called out in phases, phase one, a phase two, a phase three. So we could approach this. I think we actually already asked to do this. I think you guys already asked to this. And the proposal's based on this phase one, phase two, phase three approach. You know, based kind of on Pete said about, you know, maybe getting in and just doing some design development work.
Chris, I think similar to other projects that we've deliberated on, we're looking at what are avoided costs for completing this project. And I think it may relate as well to the facility on the high school campus, because we were looking at combining those two entities. And then also I'm remembering the asphalt being in pretty poor condition that was driving, you know, either a major repaving was going to need to happen in that area. I don't know that it's even possible to do the kind of patching. So I, I don't want to put you on the spot, but as we're looking at revisiting this project, it would be good for us to revisit the avoided costs. What are the essential needs of the new facility? We may need to talk about not only potentially delaying things and what that would cost us, but also altering our expectations. You know, I know that at one point Ryan from TDA had said you can do prefab units for bus garages. Not to, we don't want to detract from what the district needs and, but it's maybe something we want to take another look at and, and even eating away at that $2 million budget to still get something that's really sufficient for what we need sooner rather than later.
Is, is the facility now, and I gotta tell you, I don't, I don't think I've been up that hill once. And so I, I don't really know what you've got there now, but is it a pre-engineered building now or?
No, it's a block CMU building. And I think there's metal trusses that span a couple of bays.
Clear span or, oh, a couple of bays, okay.
Yeah, and there's one pull-through bay and one drive-in bay, which are not, it's not really sufficient for us. You know, for, you know, repairs, we'd probably have at least two pull-through bays there. So.
Okay.
I mean, worth a, is it worth a walkabout sometime?
Excuse me?
Is it worth taking a walk up there and just seeing what we're dealing with?
I, I'm more than happy to run up there and walk around the building. Long as nobody arrests me while I'm doing it.
Could we get a guided tour, Chris?
You can get, well, yep. Why don't I, I'm happy to schedule something similar to what we did at the, at Gurney, you know, and we can kind of tie, take a walk through that. I think it would be beneficial to have, you know, Ryan there since he's done an initial assessment. In addition to having Mike Morgan there, our transportation supervisor. So I certainly can schedule something like that in the next week and a half or so. And, you know, as long as we wear masks and, you know, stay away from one another, I think we can do that quite easily.
Cool. I'd recommend that.
So we, we were planning on putting this on a future board agenda where we can have some more complete information and marry it with some levy scenarios that Ashley's been working on. Bob and Ashley, can you advise, is that planned for this week or is that the next board meeting after this one?
I believe we were going to go through some of that this week. I have some stuff ready to talk about. I have some numbers that had been altered just even today. Just based on, you know, information that keeps coming in. But yeah, I was planning on doing that this week.
Okay, well, that would be great. And that will be in the public portion of the meeting. So these committee members would be able to hear a lot of additional information. I'm sure you've been working on preparing with Chris. Got the process, not anything.
The high-level stuff, yes.
Hey Pete, for my knowledge, and you know, anyone else, what do you, what are you escalating projects at annually going out?
Oh boy, you know, I would say last year, if, if you would have thought about that, maybe it was 2%, you know, maybe. I don't know, you know, it could well be that costs are coming down. You know, it depends on how this whole coronavirus thing plays out. But I, we have one project in Colorado that are, we're not building, we're actually the developer and we're hiring a contractor. And they're, they're anticipating somewhere between 5 and 10% savings. I, I, I am not seeing that here right now, but it could, it could be, you know, I mean, as the market tightens up and projects don't go forward and people need to work, you know, they get hungry and prices come down.
Yeah.
That's good information. Thank you.
Well, as a follow-up, I'll certainly schedule that walkthrough. I'll send you guys an email after this and, you know, copy the committee in. And we can schedule time to get up there and take a look at that and get some feedback. I appreciate the, the interest and you'll, I, I'll take any, any insight you might have about the, the building or facility or the pavement and that sort of thing too. And I did, to Catherine's point, we, we did do a small paving patching back in, I would say, October. Maybe it was even late, late September of last year before the asphalt plans closed to, to, to tighten some things up right there. And I haven't looked to see how bad it is since we've got this, you know, the spring. But, you know, the pavement is a, is an ongoing concern up there, you know.
Chris, since we're going to be talking about this on Wednesday, does that give you enough time? I, I think a lot of this information has been generated. It's just in different places. Would that give you time to pull it together and put together some type of a, an email that provides us links? So we can just remind ourselves of the information that you've already gathered about the projects that would need to be done there if we weren't to rebuild the garage, that type of thing?
Yeah, I can do that. I can put together kind of a summary of, you know, and again, I have a schedule for that in VFA, but not a, you know, not a nothing, nothing that's more, like I don't have a recent walkthrough assessment, you know, it's theoretical. But I could tell you the things that I start to get nervous about. And I think actually walking through with the team probably would be really valuable, you know, probably get us a lot of insight as well. I'm going to go ahead just, and again, I'll, I'll move on because we're at 4:35. I know there's a couple of people on the call as particular that have to get to another meeting. And at least I wanted to get to some of these other projects if, if we're able to do that on the 21 and 22 fiscal year, if we can do that, is that, is that, is that okay? projects if, if we're able to do that on the twenty-one and twenty-two uh, fiscal year. If we can do that, is that, is that, is that okay? Alright, so again, this was an exercise here where um, we were asked to say in the next two coming fiscal years, fiscal year twenty-one, which starts in July and then fiscal year twenty-two, um, what projects do we end up removing? Um, yeah, if, if we can look at savings and we're seeing a downturn in the economy and challenges that we might have economically. And so there was a level one and a level two. Level one is the things that are, uh, we backlog or pull off the project list. That would be the easiest uh, things to remove. And then a second level would be level two, which would be, um, you know, um, you know, being a little more aggressive. So um, the lists in uh, fiscal year twenty-one for level one, uh, are an LED lighting plan. Uh, we would remove the indoor um, uh, lighting plan. Um, and we would keep the outdoor lighting plan um, uh, on, on there. So there's a savings there of three hundred and forty thousand. And that's a lighting plan to redo with LED across seven twelve campus and at Gurney. Um, you know, I think I've talked to a couple of you independently about this. Um, you know, and there's some wisdom in having that project, but um, you know, given where we're at, I, I, I think that's probably the easiest one to remove. Uh, we're removing actually a, a, a bus um, from next year's, um, we won't, we won't buy, we were gonna buy two buses. One, we're advancing as I mentioned. And the other one we're actually removing um, from, from there. Uh, and then a level two, um, we're moving a van purchase.
Welcome to Zoom.
Yeah, right.
Let me see if he even knows he's frozen.
Bob, have you used Teams?
Teams for cleaning and work uh, up at the school?
No, no, it's a similar, I think it's a Microsoft product.
Oh, no, we've used um, what it was, Google Hangouts. And then we transition mo- more over to um, Zoom.
We've been using Teams a lot and it's, it's pretty dependable.
Yeah.
We don't much get this frozen stuff. Sometimes it backs up, but not very often.
Can you share a screen?
Yeah, I think it's more a product of the internet connection, not necessarily the platform.
Platform, yeah.
Yeah, when you have high school kids at home and they jump on their live streaming of video games and everything else and everything slows down.
They're doing homework.
I'm gonna give them one more minute and then I'll just, I, I can go through these projects.
That's why our sleep all day and stay up all night because apparently Steve and I slow down the wifi too much for them.
Are they your kids? Wait a minute, you said you stay up all night or they?
They stay up all night and they sleep all day because.
That's okay. As long as they're not missing their classwork.
Mike, is he able to get back in if he is trying? He's not locked out, right?
He's not locked out. If he tries to get back in, I'll let him in.
Oh, you're the gatekeeper?
I use the waiting room, so yeah, I have to admit you.
Okay.
So um, I guess I'll chime in while we're waiting for Chris. These um, are recommendations that the administration has put together um, for the board to consider. And one of the things we're looking at is um, adjustments that we may need to make based on a delayed levy um, or a reduced mileage amount that we would be going to the voters for. Um, so that's one of the reasons why Chris prepared it as a tier one and a tier two. It gives us some flexibility depending on how far we think we need to go in cost savings. Chris, can you hear us?
Yes, I apologize. I dropped out there. My phone uh, I think heated up. Um, the um, uh, yeah, so would you just like me to go ahead and continue? Is that a good place to be? Sorry about that. Level two, we were talking about reducing the scope of the electrical heater system here at the high school. Um, and then um, uh, we'll reduce um, a pa- paving project at Gurney. Um, a small reduction there. And then um, you know, in twenty twenty-two, a locker renewal. Uh, this seems smart. We'll, we'll be backlogging this anyway. Uh, because we actually did a locker renewal this summer that we purchased through some furniture budget where we replaced cubbies with some of the old block hanging locker coat racks. If you guys remember that too. So if you walk through this in the, in the August there, you'll see new wooden cubbies across Gurney and we're doing that with internal staff. So we, we've accomplished that with furniture budget. Advancing that project, that's awesome. And then um, PA system at Gurney. Um, I think that's something that we know is at the end of its useful life, but has not been causing us any failures. Um, and so we're um, asking to backlog that one if there's a savings. Um, and then some, um, just some additional controls and mechanicals um, as far as savings go in level two. That one's one I feel a little more, um, you know, uh, it'll, it'll, we'll, we'll know a little bit more about phase three in HVAC as we get a little farther into this project. And maybe we don't reduce all of that um, in level uh, two, but you know, we can um, take a look at that once we start getting into the HVAC updating. And then of course, one bus is removed um, from that year's budget as well too. And that concludes my summary of year one and year two.
Any, any thoughts as you guys are absorbing and I think, you know, Chris, is it safe to say that level one are less painful than level two? Savings for us to realize are, are less risky?
Yes, they are. Yes. Uh, and you know, I looked at those, uh, all those projects individually, but then also looked at our um, you know, our scorecard that we developed as well too, which was very helpful.
It's also that link in the, and that link in the bottom, they can actually go in and see kind of what stayed in if you wanted to weigh in on what was prioritized.
Yes, you'll see, uh, yes, that's exactly right. Yeah.
Sandbox?
Yes, that's just a, it's a, you know, version, a more recent version of the same data set that we've used in the past, but if you so, are so inclined to look at all the projects, they're all in there. And they're in there by year and then backlogged is, there's a column for backlog or not backlogged. And you'll see kind of, a- a- and that, the, the data in there talks to the chart above in the notes where it says revised chart from fifth, um, you know, fourteen seventeen.
Is there any scenario study kind of of this fall with COVID that would put more pressure on any specific area? I guess I'm, I kind of was wondering about buses.
Yeah, so we don't have a ton of guidance here. So we're starting to have those conversations include, you know, from hand sanitizer to sanitizing equipment to potential plexiglass and where we might need that in offices. I have a hard time imagining a place where you need plexiglass around the driver, but it's okay with kids to sit and you know, next to each other or with each other. So, but again, we have zero parameters and we're kind of just looking at other states' guidance right now and and starting to brainstorm. So there is potential risk that there will be additional costs because of COVID. But there also might be savings. You know, it's that, it's that wide of a spectrum.
We um, oh, sorry to interrupt Bob, but one other thing that we had talked about in the previous call was um, automated faucets. Um, you know, where, um, there are some places in the district that we have those automated faucets and others that we don't. Um, you know, so that would certainly be an expense if we decided to go with that. Um, you know, uh, kind of those kind of touch activated or I guess you, they're touchless. Yeah.
Is there any money in the CARES Act that, that, that the school system can?
Yeah, we're gonna get about forty-four thousand dollars. Um, there is some, you know, there are restrictions on that money. I'm not totally sure when it's coming in yet. Um, but yeah, we were informed this morning uh, that the eighty percent of our Title I allocation estimate that they gave us last week is, is actually what's gonna happen. So ODE is giving us forty-four thousand, um, is their estimate right now. Um, I think thirty-seven hundred of that has to be for um, equitable services to the parochial. So um, the only one that we have is St. John of Ark, but we'll have to work with them to, to provide equitable services as well. Uh, but the rest of that is, is ours to use.
Well, and that's a good ques- you've also noticed where we've, we've acquired some grants. Um, you know, it's hard to know, you know, obviously a lot of safety insurance grants popped up. Um, you know, in the past three or four years, I, it's possible that there's grant opportunities. Um, you know, we have some, some of these projects are pretty well scoped out enough to, you know, to go ahead and apply for a grant if there's funding available.
I know you all are just taking a look at the other projects. Is there any project on, that's staying on the list that draws your attention or you might have a question about, not to put you on the spot, on short notice, but while you're looking at that, so just to conclude, with, with the level one, we have about five hundred thousand in cost avoidance, I guess I would say, or pushing it down the road. And these are things we're gonna have to be back on our list later, but if we take those into our backlog, it'll save about half a million dollars out of our budget over the next couple of years. And then um, if we add the second level items, that's another about six hundred thousand. So it's, it's helpful, but the biggest impact is gonna be the bus garage. Um, and you know, what that is gonna cost, when it needs to happen.
Well, I, I can't weigh in on that one until I go through that walk, walkthrough.
I agree.
Yeah, it'd be lovely to have a one million dollar bus garage project that would not be pushing it down the road, but get the essential job done, but who knows, you know, I mean, I, I'm sure, I mean, smart people have looked at it, so.
That's definitely one of the things we need to evaluate is if, if doing a smaller project sooner makes more sense at this juncture. And I don't remember Pete, if you were there when Ryan went through. He has, he had some preliminary design um, in that master planning document that he had put together um, and went through a pretty, a pretty good amount of detail. Um, you know, Chris, remind me, it's, it's combining the bus capability with the maintenance. What's it, the, the old music building on the high school campus would be, we would move that capability into the bus garage as well.
I think we would, I think we would probably retain that building uh, for storage. Um, you know, there's one bay for maintenance um, in, in the bus garage design as it's designed. Um, but you know, you also have to remember, uh, at the intermediate school, we had, you know, two large garages there that we've vacated um, and, and don't have right now. So there's a lot of seasonal equipment that we're currently keeping, um, you know, in those wonderful containers. Um, you know, so we've kind of swapped that, that material in and out. So if we want to get rid of those containers, we probably need to have, retain that building for storage up on the hill, the band building, the old, the permanent maintenance garage. Um, and then um, kind of utilize the new bus garage maintenance as a an active, you know, um, facility where grounds and, and, and maintenance would kind of actually work out of.
And I, the only other thing I remember Ryan saying, because I thought, you know, can we just assume that's a third of the cost because it's one of the three bays? And his response was, um, the, it, it's much more expensive to build on the bus garage side. Not only just from a constructability standpoint, but all of the equipment that will need to go into those bays. So we would have to, you know, we'd certainly have to reengage him in the conversation about what if we just went with the bus garage and left maintenance off um, to either come back at a later time or not do it all.
Are you? I'm, we're talking about two separate sites. What's, what's, what could be in the bus garage site or the Gurney site? That would be needed or used anywhere else in the I'm, I'm confused about what goes where. Maintenance is what? Um, is it maintenance of equipment that's on individual sites that gets transported back and forth or it? I'm, I'm not, I'm confused about the, the old band building versus what we're talking about for the bus.
We utilize the old van building as a, as a um, location for grounds equipment and for our, also for our maintenance equipment. Basically our shop, our tools. If we have to do repairs on, um, you know, uh, units, we'll, you know, we'll put them in there and do that repair. Um, it kind of functions as a maintenance facility. If we move that to the bus garage bay, um, you know, we would utilize the van building simply uh, for some, some, you know, for storage of off-seasonal grounds equipment, you know, the summer stuff, um, you know, versus the winter stuff, that sort of thing.
And we, we just don't have room for uh, the riding lawnmowers, the zero turns. Uh, the snow removal equipment, the snow, um, the snow removal tractor, the regular tractor and the assault truck. Our, uh, summer landscape equipment and winter grounds equipment won't fit in the facility that we have.
In the band, old band building or whatever. Yeah.
Yes.
Okay.
Right, we just need, we reduced our total square footage on grounds and maintenance equipment when we reduced the intermediate school. Um, and that problem was, is being solved by a couple container or three containers that are up by the um, the site that we just use for seasonal storage. And it's functional, but it's barely functional. It's just off, it's onsite storage basically that we trade out seasonally, winter and summer, basically for equipment, because we just don't have enough square footage for equipment. We would remove those if we build a new uh, maintenance building. Jim, anything else to add on that?
Question? What's the, what, just the square footage differential? Um, if you, if you built the proposed, when, um, then design did the, um, the proposals that, that we, we saw before, how much extra space are they allotting for that maintenance slash bus garage facility? What, how big is that building that they're planning and designing?
I don't know. Off the top of my head, I'd have to take a look at it. I think when we walk it, that's a really good question to kind of see it and talk about it. Yeah, that's a great que- that's a great question.
In, big picture question. The, the HVAC controls are like the other big not in there. There's the middle schoo- the, the high school is three fifty and the middle school's two forty. So they add up to about six hundred. Um, are they like, showed red? They have to happen versus the bus garage? Because that's, that's almost big enough to start to be a trade-off to, you know, part of the way, get you part of the way there.
Yeah, we're in very bad shape with that. The controls are very outdated. There, the architecture of the controls and many of the um, the equipment associated with the controls is from uh, the time, the era the inter, the middle school was built. So you're talking about firmware and pieces of equipment, be it, um, you know, some of the, some of the controllers we can't even get a hold of now. They're on so- software called Tracer Summit. Um, and it, that's, it's, it's, it's causing us, it's causing us if we don't do that, um, significant break, fix, repair costs on the control side. And also in addition to that, you know, uh, lack of energy savings with new controls and there's a comfort and program piece. So controls and mechanicals are, are really essential. They're complicated. I don't know that, you know, um, it's, it's not an easy project, but um, you know, uh, we, we really believe, you know, especially if you get into that report, you can start to see the current state of our, our, you know, the assessment that, that was done and was linked up in the top. Yeah, you'll get a chance to see kind of what our current, um, you know, controls and mechanicals are from a, um, for district's perspective.
Go ahead, Chris.
I was just gonna say, was there any other questions? The awkward Zoom silence, sorry about that.
It's okay. It's hard to do this sometimes. Um, so just to recap, um, we're gonna set up a tour and invite Ryan. um, we're gonna set up a tour, invite Ryan to participate so we can uh, get some questions answered. Um, Chris, it'd be great if that could happen as soon as possible, but um, you know, we are gonna be talking about this at the board meeting on Wednesday. I don't know if we're gonna be making a firm decision or not. And then um, hopefully before Wednesday, just to have a recap document from you that uh, provides us with some links to avoided costs, maybe the FCI report for the bus garage and the design, et cetera, anything that you think would be valuable just to have it all in one place as we're evaluating this. Um, and I think, you know, there's one thing that's a little bit new. I, we did, we did talk about this with Ryan. Um, you know, the, the delay and get everything we want or accelerate it or keep it on schedule and maybe get a little bit less. I think that's revisiting a conversation. Um, it'd be very interesting to get his opinion on if we just did bare bones and we were able to do it in the next two years, what would that budget potentially be, you know, and also including the design? I'm not expecting that for Wednesday. I'm just saying that's um, something I think we're gonna need to revisit.
You know, and.
Can't not do this project, you know, can only put it off for so long, so we have to look at those trade-offs of, go ahead and do it. Maybe it's not ideal or, you know, put it off. Sorry, Pete, go ahead.
Well, I was just gonna say, it's, it's, in, in my opinion, um, it's such a challenging time to make any kind of plans because you just don't know what you don't know. And um, you know, we, we're constantly being asked on some of our properties to, you know, forecast out, you know, what it's gonna look like and like, you know, we got a hotel that has three point eight percent occupancy. You know, I, I have no clue. How, how do you, how do you look at the future?
And to George's point, I mean, busing may look vastly different after
Yeah.
Get some more guidance.
Yeah. Yeah, it's like, it's just a, you know, just a really strange, strange time right, right this second.
I think.
Well, we, um, as you know, we have to.
Off all the buses and make them convertibles, that could go a long way.
No winter school anymore, just summer.
We could dress for it, come on.
We're gonna go, actually, we're gonna do the open air, we're adding on, we're gonna add an open air section on the top of the bus.
Right.
There you go. Yeah, go sit up top.
Double decker.
Okay, so yeah, I mean, we're just making the best decisions we can with the information that we have right now. Um, and as you know, we, we are required to submit five-year forecasts. Um, we obviously have a lot of planning that goes into presenting an issue to the voters, so um, and we are at that juncture where we need to go to the voters for something, so um, we'll do our best to get the information um, about what we might potentially be able to save with, save with the bus garage. And Chris, we'll just wait to hear back from you about the tour, um, any information prior to the meeting. Um, everybody, you're invited. Uh, the meeting is at six o'clock on Wednesday. It'll be livestreamed just like this. Um, Chris or Ashley, would one of you send a link to that to uh, the committee members so if they want to listen in on the juncture of the meeting where we talk about facilities, they can? That'd be great. Okay, well then, any other comments? Okay, with that, I'll close the meeting. Thank you, everybody. It's good to see you.
Thank you. Look forward to seeing you on our tour.
Thanks.
Be safe, all.
Bye-bye.
Bye.